Greetings.
Hello.
Hello.
You did it.
Yeah, so. So I haven't typed in any host code. It says. All right. Your instructions are at the bottom of the window. Or claim host or the three dots. Where are the three dots?
I don't have three dots on mine.
Yeah, all right. Maybe now there we go. It just. All right, do we think I'm the default host?
I don't know, Matt might be able to tell me.
Yeah. Hey, Matt.
Yep.
I haven't put in the host code yet. Am I by default the host or what?
So down below where it says participants?
Yeah.
Click on that.
Oh.
And then you'll see the participants and then the.
Got it.
Say claim homes.
There we go. All right. All right, good to go. All right.
And then you'll just want to assign someone co-host.
Okay.
Just in case something happens and you can't.
Yeah, excellent. All right.
Bump off.
Woo-hoo. Not too bad. That's on record. The, all right. So I'm in and. Susan and Matt, it's very nice to see you and Jim, it's nice to see you. And Aaron, great, great to have you on. Jim, I made you co-host.
Okay.
So. The, there's a background filter where you can make yourself look like Bill Spalding. How's my background noise? My, my air conditioner has decided to. Have a death rattle.
I can't hear it.
Good. All right. Fantastic. Well. Megan is unable to join us and so we're just waiting for Bill. All right, we'll give ourselves one more minute. We do, we do have a quorum. All right. It being seven oh one and we have a quorum, we should. Call this to order and get us started and presumably. Bill will join us any minute. I have not heard from him. So, so welcome to the June 14th Planning Board Meeting. So in terms of call to order. Consistent with the governor's orders extending certain provisions of the open meeting law. Every effort will be made to allow the public to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial and number. One through. With a meeting ID and passcode, please only use the dial in or computer and not both as audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. In compliance with Americans with Disability Act, this location is accessible to people with disabilities. Wakefield provides reasonable accommodations and or language assistance free of charge upon request. If you are a person with a disability and require information or materials in an alternate format. Or if you require any other accommodation, please contact the town's disability coordinator. William Renault, Town Engineer at seven eight one two four six six three zero eight. As far in advance of the event as possible, every effort will be made to grant your request. Advanced notification will enable the town to make reasonable arrangements to remove an accessible accessibility barrier for you. So it is nice to have y'all on the call. We do have a quorum. Matt, Jim and myself. As I mentioned, Megan Minasoli is unable to make the meeting. And really grateful that Susan Ald and Aaron Kupinda are on the, are in the meeting with us. Appreciate all of your help all the time. So. I'm hoping that we can get through this in about 60 minutes and I think that's really my primary job as Chair. Is to set some standards. So.
Excuse me, Theo.
Yeah.
You do need to take a roll call though.
Oh, that's right.
As required.
Right on my list and I skipped right over it. So thank you, Matt. Let's do a roll call. Jim Hogan.
Present.
Matt Lowry.
Present.
And myself, Theo Knowle, I'm here. All right, so again, we have a quorum. So the, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any comments, edits? Is there a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All right. Motion by Jim and seconded by Matt. So our vote. Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And yes, for myself. So the motion carries. Three to zero, the minutes are approved. And hooray. All right. Thank you, Bill. For joining us. You, you missed the great excitement. We just approved the minutes.
Oh, excellent. Well, happy flag day to everyone.
Yeah, that's right. Happy flag day. All right. Do you have any comments or edits for the minutes?
I do not. Thank you. Thank you.
Can we add you to the, the vote to approve the minutes?
No, I, I think that went by. It's fine if you do, but I don't think it's necessary.
Okay, very good. All right. So the, the next item on our agenda is to discuss the revision of the subdivision rules and regulations. Matt circulated a draft earlier and I, I think that's going to be the, the document that we're going to start with. Aaron circulated some comments but from Concom which. I think we can try to incorporate in our discussion and so we'll, we'll get started there. Let's, let's give ourselves 20 minutes to start and, and see where we get to. So Matt, you want to take it away? Yeah, Jim, one other.
I, I did, as we get into this, I did not have one question for Matt going through this document, which one? Thank you for taking the first pass. There's a number of elements that are highlighted in lieu of having like red line marks because there's also red line marks in addition. Is that highlight, highlighted meant to. Flag things that need to be reviewed in your mind or they? What was the intent there?
All right, Matt is muted.
You can hear me better if I am mute. So I think I will mute. Yeah, the highlighted were some of the items that I had, had looked at that I thought may we, as a full board may want to take a look at. So what I was thinking is we could basically go through this relatively quickly and just go through each, each section. I'll point out the things that I have seen and if you guys want to add to it, we can. I think the first thing we should do is just go through them and, and see what, what we have for subdivisions. We don't do a lot of subdivisions. In town because of just the amount of land we have, but when we do have them. There's a lot of information that we need to go through, so. Theo, if you want to let me. Yeah. Share screen, I can do that. Let's see, is that? You'll have to grant. Access for that.
All right, I just clicked multiple participants, several teams, so. Think you should be able to share.
All right. Let's.
And Matt, just to confirm, these are from back in like 2018 when you and Paul were kind of making some, going through, making edits. I'm just looking through old files right now.
Yeah, we have, there were some edits up until. Yeah, I. I don't think these have been edited for. 13 years or so.
Yeah.
So.
Okay.
Trying to. I. See if this.
There we go.
Can you see that? Is that up there?
Yeah.
All right. Going to rearrange my windows a little bit. All right, so this is section three twenty dash twelve. The submission of a definitive plan. So. If you read through this, it kind of starts off getting right into the submission and then at the end of the submission, it gets into who it needs to go to. So. As you read through this, it, it, it seems a little bit out of order. You'd almost think you would need to know. Some of this information, it, it seems a little disjointed. So I don't know how much we want to get in and start, you know, rearranging this or. But that's what I saw going through this. So. The first part here is anyone who wants to do it, you got the number of copies and things. I think we, we have the number of copies, we may want to double check that with the town and see. Aaron, you've dealt with a most recent submission. Do you know if all 17 copies of plans were actually utilized or?
No, and I think that's something definitely we can look at. I don't know if there's anything legally binding to that 17 number. But you know, most of the stuff I did share, I did put them in their mailbox, more the depart, internal departments. But a lot of times everyone just wants it through PDF email. They find that to be the easiest. So I think, and this is conversations I had back with Gail Conroy with the ZBA, Susan All probably right when I started to. How we can streamline it and not use as much paper. And I think this, you know, this is a perfect start where we probably don't need those 17 copies. You know, maybe one for each board member, but I guess it's up to the board to what they, how they find it useful. Do they like the paper copies? I mean, of course, we need some for, to, you know, keep on file at town, but. Yeah, I think the 17 copies is not necessary anymore.
Okay. The, the number of copies may be preferential depending on who's on the board. I, I prefer PDFs, I'm sure. I'm, I'm sure Jim and, and Bill probably do too because you'd get so much paper on your desk that it's hard to get through. So. And if I need something, I can print it out. So. We may want to look at what number. We want the hard copies to be. I do know some towns have gone completely paperless and everything's electronic. But they also have. A system for you to file things. It's not just all emails. So I don't know.
Yeah, sorry to cut you off, Matt. Susan was on the call with me too. We talked to the town of Lexington probably last February and. I think they do actually use viewpoint, which is the internal system we use now to track permits and all that stuff. It's just more of the capacity level of handling that. But it's conversations we've had and I think in partnership with the ZBA, it might be something in the future.
Okay. Again, for, for us in Wakefield, we don't do a whole lot of these. So I know the investment in that may not be worth it, but. That's something to look at. So we'll look at. How many copies? Now, I'm working from home, so I'm not be able to edit. On the fly as easily as far as that works. So I'm just marking up a paper copy. So if anyone has anything, I'll jot down some. Some notes on here. So. Going through this. Item D, a reproduction of the work plan showing traverse lines. Just from experience, I've never seen anyone file this before. So this may be something. We can eliminate just since basically no one files it at this point. So. Item E, copies of legal notices again. This is all, I think electronically submitted to you anyways, correct, Aaron? You actually do them anyways. So you have the legal notice.
Yeah, yeah, I technically have done the most recent ones. Yeah, so.
Okay.
But they do pay for it.
All right.
Yeah.
So certified butter's list, we'll get that. Copies of any variances made. Again, I haven't seen any subdivisions that, that have been on, that anyone has filed that. Item H statement bias. Signed by a registered land surveyor that the error of closure is greater than one in 12,000. I, any survey can, can get more than one in 12,000 nowadays. So this may be something we want to think about eliminating also. And then. We haven't had any really subdivisions that are 10 lots or more. I think we would just keep item I in there. So. This documented evidence of proven ownership and maintenance of open space shown on the definitive plan. This seems like. Something that needs to go. More with the definitive plan is in not here, but. We'll have to work on that too. Estimates for the cost of performing various items. This all gets done, it gets done at the end of the, once we're getting close to approval. So I, I guess we can keep that in there. One thing I did add in on I is. Any waivers that are requested, they should go on the plans themselves just so we can track them. They're actually. When these get recorded, they'll be on there instead of having them separate. So. I know all of the last subdivisions, they've actually done that or we've requested them to do it. So we'll put that on there. So it. Yeah, people know from the start. And again, a lot of the subdivisions that we've done recently have been done by firms that have previously filed them. So they kind of know the rules. I'm fitting a lot of this into what. Has already been done and it's not really going to be new to many of the people that. File here. And then. So. On B here, notice the town clerk, you'll see that I've gone through and, and removed all of the he's because a lot of this was. All written in the masculine form. So I'm just, just taking that out to in changing. He to they mostly just. Not to be offensive to anyone. Again, further down. All information listed. Listed below shall be submitted on a computer disk. So I've just changed that to digital format. Again, just kind of bringing things into. A little modern terms.
Yeah, Matt, as in this section right here for the definitive plan and the scaling. With the last applicant for Stark App, they requested a waiver from that one in 40 feet. To go to one in 20 to make the plans fit more succinctly. Is that something that we've been seeing as a, as a typical in terms of. Adjusting the specific scale slash, is there a compelling reason for us to have a specific scale that we're requiring from applicants and, and requiring a waiver to get away from that?
It, it, I don't know if we actually need, I don't think this is actual waiver. They just request that they come in with a. More appropriate scale and we've always let them do that. Obviously, one in 40 works for. A certain size subdivision, a lot of the smaller. Three to five lot subdivisions will, for the most part, fit on a 20 scale and it's much, as you know, a lot easier to read. So.
Does it make sense to just have it say, say something to their perspective and appropriate scale on there? So we don't have to have that. You know, us granting permission for someone to submit something different. I guess the question like more is, is there a compelling reason to have a, a town standard that we're deviating away from?
Nope, we can, we can do that to an appropriate scale. I actually put a lot of that on my, my proposals just so you don't get locked into something. Shall be submitted. And at an appropriate size and scale to show detail, something like that.
I think that makes a lot of sense. It gives applicants the ability to use a little bit of discretion. So we don't have to have. Not really a value add conversation in a later time.
Okay. Yeah, I can't really do any live edits. So I'm just doing this on my markup. So. All right. So. Item number two here, when you get to the definitive plan shall contain the following information. This general information on each sheet, some of this really. Would go on a, a title block, others not so much. So. As you can see, I took out fax number because I don't know if anyone knows how to run a fax machine anymore. So I removed that. Number seven here on each sheet, a note will reference. Yeah, well, a, a note. All references in sources significant to the preparation of the document, this is something, this would go on an existing conditions plan, I would feel, not on every sheet. So. I feel like this could move to. The existing conditions plan sheet. I don't know how other people feel about that, but.
I feel as if that's unnecessary for every sheet. I feel like that if there's that information in one. One location, I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I agree with one location for all the contact information on this general. Information sheet. Yes.
Yeah. In truth, a lot of people do this now anyways. So. We're, we're just kind of like complying with almost common sense of what most people do. So.
But just to my point, it's like, wouldn't there be a cover sheet with all this information? I'm not sure it needs to be on each sheet.
Correct. Well, there's just some things like the scale bar graph that needs to be on, on each sheet.
Agreed.
Obviously a North Arrow. You wouldn't have that, you know, a, a North Arrow pointing upward to the top of the sheet. We always try to do that, but occasionally you have to vary from that. So. I, I think a lot of this stuff, most design professionals know that there's a little bit of leeway and I don't think we're gonna, you know, hammer anyone too much. For that.
Um, one, one thing that did stick out to me when I was reviewing this is I think item number. Four, saying the contractor. My assumption is that, you know, the, the review process that we're embarking on with these subdivisions, we are, we're kind of agnost, you know, where it's more about what is the content of the. Of the actual. Engineering, right? And a contractor may or may not be fully onboarded for that scope of work. So I don't know. I, I was questioning whether that would be something that would be. Appropriate to be requiring as part of the planning board subdivision process.
That makes sense because yeah, a lot of times you don't know who the contractor is. So. So we want to just remove that or how do we?
I would advocate for removal, but.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to do another red line of this and, and put some notes in here. So. We can see what we have right now. And then when we send this on to other departments, they can see what, where things are and if we're going to keep them or if we're gonna. Relocate them or basically remove them and then they can comment on it. So. All right. So we'll mark that for removal. Yeah, item number nine, a legend denoting any traffic and pedestrian signs again. We don't really see that too much. So we can, I don't know if you want to keep that or how you want to handle that, but. I suppose it doesn't hurt to keep it. So.
I don't think that one matters one way or the other, frankly.
Okay. And then. Item 11 here, I know. To me, this is a, a really important. Item that almost always gets. Missed and left off is a limited work line. So. I always advocate to have that on here and make sure you watch it because sometimes it, it meanders and sometimes it completely disappears. A lot of these end up. Potentially changing right at the end of the project when it is, when they decide they need to have a little bit more work or they want to expand the project. So. We always want to look for that.
I agree, Matt. It's the first thing I look for.
Yeah.
After my experience professionally with the title line, I asked you a question about Matt the other day. I'm a strong advocate for making sure that we key have almost bolted. Make sure that you, you have ever clear understanding of where your, your property line and your limited work ends up being.
Yeah.
Does that mean moving it up, making it like the first thing?
What was that?
Does that mean like we should move it up? In the list or no?
Well, this is something almost you, you would want to put on the. Further down on the specific sheet that you're, that it would be on instead of having it in a general section. So. This is where some of this stuff where it may. Maybe better to move it to the actual section where it's going to be or the plan is going to show up on. Maybe better to move it to the actual section where it's going to be or the plan is going to show up on. Just so someone doesn't skip over it. So this would go.
So for example, you'd put it under, you'd put it as a bullet point under the context plan. Under the property rights and dimensional standards plan. And so you have that as a requirement, each one of those individual plan. Requirements.
Yeah, so primarily under the site construction plan of what's going to go on and, and then that would stay. Um, on the great grading and drainage plan and utility plan. So. Um, I, I think I understand why they put it here is because it needs to show up on multiple sheets, but I don't know if we want to. Specifically list that on the utility plan and profile and on the site construction plan.
I'd be an advocate to list it on the relevant plans that we wanted to be just based on how, how important it ends up being. And how easy it is, the kind of the general. List of, of requirements that are applicable to other things are easy to overlook. It's easier to check a box off.
Agreed, agreed.
Yeah, and if, if you, if you call it out that it's supposed to be on. Four different sheets and it's not on any of them, you can say, oh, how did you miss it four times instead of one? So, okay. I agree with that. Each. Alright. All plans will be drafted to correct and readable professional manner. Yeah, that makes sense. One of the, the. Having them drawn to. The town of Wakefield CAD system standards. I don't know. If the town has a standard that is sent out, because I know most, most people have their own standards and. Um, they tend not to. Draft in other people's standards or. This usually will get converted over at the end.
Have my hand up. Um, so this is a conversation that I've been having with Katie Lafferty and GIS, um, and engineering. For a few months now, um, and she said when we do revisit, and she's the one that, um, does all the overlays and things. Once the plans are endorsed for addresses and, and for our zoning over, or not zoning for, um. For the assessor's office as well. So I'll find out from her if we just want to make a note exactly what that, um. You know, what that might, what would be the best for her or for the, for their office. And maybe that can, we can add some language there. Cause she did note, a lot of times we don't enforce this, asking them to send us a CAD and then she has to recreate it from. Um, what she sees on the plan. So, um, but I'll double check with her on that and hopefully we can get some language. I'll make note of that.
Okay, uh, I'm guessing item, item twelve kind of. Piggybacks into item thirteen, as long as things are on the, the, the town's system, which is, uh. Mass state plan coordinate system. So I'm, I'm probably guessing that's more what they're, they're looking for right there.
Yep, Matt, if I could.
Yeah.
I, the only thing I could find was, um, December twenty first, twenty eighteen. The DPW has their designing construction standards and details. There's nothing in there about CAD standards or any GIS stuff. So. Do we want to rely on, I mean, do we want to reference from our documents to a specific document? Or to? For the applicant to review with the DPW what their requirements are. That way, if they do change, we don't have to change anything.
Listen, I'm going to mark this as engineering to, to comment on. You know, this, for the most part, I think there's only a few items that. They need to pull off to put on their GIS, which is the boundary lines and. Maybe the buildings, uh, and some of the utilities. I don't know if they need everything drafted so they can drop it in. So. But, um, we'll have engineering comment on this. See what exactly they want. And then again, like, um. The datum shall clearly. Shall be clearly stated on the plans, control monuments. This again needs, I. And think to move to the relevant sheet itself because we wouldn't have this on every single sheet. So. So I would think I would move this to existing conditions plan. Because it, if your, if your existing distance plan is based on this, all the other plans following along should be in the same system. So. Yeah, and then data, the original preparation, now we see all that, the, the signature block. Uh, and the space for the town clerk, that needs to go on each sheet. So we may want to. May want to put on each sheet on in this section or again move them into. I don't know if we need to repeat. These items that, you know, the date is prepared and revision block on each sheet. That's a general note that I think would stay here. Anyone has any preference on that or not, but.
No, that makes sense to, to just make that small edit and leave it there.
So, so now you get into the specific information. So this is where the, the plan sets getting built here. And this is the order that the sheets are going to be in. So, um, so the first, first one we have is existing additions plan. And I've changed this because, um. They have a, an existing additions plan to be done by a registered professional engineer. Which it's not really in there. I mean, they, they could do an existing additions plan, but an existing conditions doesn't. Really show boundary lines because they wouldn't be able to stamp it. So I'm going to revise this to say from a land surveyor. Because that's typically who does an existing conditions plan. And then I've added in this, um, all requirements listed in general information. So basically they're referring back up again. To all the stuff we just went over.
And Matt, just before you skip over it, um, the demolition plan typically is in the land surveyor, right? So I think that the demolition plan would want to get struck from this. So you have existing conditions plan within a land surveyor. And then demolition plan served or by typically, that's like a civil engineer, isn't it?
Correct. Yeah. So that's why I highlighted this. We, we may want to. Have a separate sheet for this if it's needed, um, for a lot of subdivisions. Well, I hate to say it, for, for many subdivisions, uh, it's a raw piece of land. So there's really not much to, to demo. Um, and, and I think it's important for us to have a clear. Understanding what's out there with the existing conditions plan and not being obscured. So someone. Say, oh, well, we're removing that. So we're not showing it or something like that. I've seen that before too. I, I think knowing exactly what's on the site is important when we start. Seeing what they're going to develop and how, uh, lines of occupation may change or walls get affected, things like that. So.
I think it makes sense to have an existing conditions plan that's a surf, that's a land surveyor and then a demo plan that's separate. And is done by a civil engineer in order to allow you to have a clear delineation of what's, what's out there by a surveyor. And then what's going to be removed, you know, if there is an existing structure.
Yeah. So I was, I was thinking of doing like, if needed, a demolition plan. That would be another sheet, um, because again, sometimes it, it may not be needed. So.
Matt, I'd like to add that, um, in past, we've had an existing plan with the demolition plan combined. And I, as a professional, I feel that's such a mistake. Um, it's so difficult to delineate what's existing and then what's being removed. Plus, they happen in different times. Existing conditions, it's what's there. It's in the past. Demolition happens actually under new construction. So. I'd rather see that as a whole separate plan. And if we could note that's a separate plan, um, I think that's even more important.
Yep. So. Um, we'll. We'll do that.
I like the if required though, because sometimes there isn't any demolition.
Yeah.
And actually, now that I'm thinking about it, demolition plans also, they're not necessarily a civil engineer. I've seen them prepared by architects. So. It just needs to be by someone who has a stamp.
Yeah, I've seen them by landscape architects, by, by anyone. So, um. And I don't even know if you really need to have a stamp, to tell you the truth. It can, obviously it will be stamped by some, by, by the engineer itself, but. So then going through this, um, there are things on here that. They're noted, but almost never happen, you know, spot elevations on a fifty foot grid. That is never done anymore just because. You used to have to do it on a grid in order to get good coverage. Now you follow contour lines with, with, so. Think we should remove this or just, uh, keep it on for. For flat.
Flat sites.
Be removed.
Alright.
I think contours are fine.
I'm kind of going back and forth because, um. I've done some sites where you have no contours at all. Um, so all you can show is spark rates. So. I'm thinking maybe. Maybe keep these, keep this or just say, uh, spot elevations, um.
I don't know, the survey, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but won't the survey have, um, spot elevations at each end of a boundary line? Do we need to, I mean, if there's no contours, it's flat. I'm not sure we need to have spot elevations.
Well, there, you know, you can, you can go up and down a foot and not see any contours. So. Having, uh, you know, you can have a site that's slightly graded in you, unless you have spark grades on it, you don't know which way it's going to flow.
Okay.
I'm kind of an advocate for keeping, keeping spot elevations, maybe just take off fifty foot grid. I'll come up with something, uh, to, to denote. You know. I'll come up with something on that. So.
Spot elevations as needed where contour lines are not present.
Yeah.
Something.
Or to, as required to denote or to, to accurately reflect grade. You know, grade flow pathway or something to that effect.
Yeah. Okay. I'll mark, I'll work on that too. Uh, location role, existing planometric features, that's good, um, steep slopes highlighted. Now. The soil classification type. Item F, I, I feel like this may, may need to go on the, uh. Drainage plan because that's where. It's going to be more important if you're doing, um. You know, infiltration or something like that. So. We may want to get engineering's input on this because this is again, something. It's, it's an existing condition, but you're, you're taking information from other people and starting to add it on to this plan. So.
I agree. I, I feel that this is something even at, when a survey's done, it might not be information that's even collected.
Yeah.
For existing.
It's a completely different discipline. It doesn't, it doesn't, it feels like it wants to go with where the discipline would be, like the, you know, the geotechnical.
Okay. Um, and then. This is part of my editing. I've got some blank space near. I don't, I don't know how to remove this, but someone who's a little bit better with, uh. Work and figure that out. So. Item G rock outcroppings that, that seems fair. Um. Now that location caliper and species of all trees. I, I've been trained in dendrology and pick out trees, but. Every one much younger than me does not know trees. So we just denote them as, uh, deciduous or coniferous. So. Um, I'm thinking we might want to take off the species and, and label them, uh. Deciduous or, or coniferous. That seemed fair to people.
It does. Um, I know I skimmed through the conservation commission comments. They did have some tree arbor, all that in there. Is there any, um, note that we should? Propose under this that, that to note that if any trees are, um. Dangerous or hung or meaning. Ready to fall. Is there something that we should noted it right in here that notes that some trees are a danger?
Well, I think that would show up in a demolition plan. Again, I don't know if you want a surveyor determining whether a tree is, is. Dangerous or not. So this might be more of a.
Okay.
Uh, uh, it's not the specialist coming in and saying that tree is good or not. I, I do feel like if there's a particularly notable tree, a specimen tree, an old beech tree or something. That we should note in here that it be, you know. Pointed out or something. So. Because we do have some sites where you will have a, you know, a nice old beech tree that you might want to show the actual drip line on. Uh, and extra grades around it to protect it. So. I don't know if we want to add something like that in. And how would we do that?
Yeah, again, it's, it's, it's not something the surveyor will do. If we are just looking at an existing plan, to your point, um, on my comment, we should just keep it at that.
Well, uh, it's kind of obvious if you've got a, a, a major feature tree.
Okay.
And. I know my guys would always, you know, note that and pick up the drip line because we know it's going to be an issue. So. Usually these are out in the open and people can see them. So. Maybe we'll just hold off on that. So. Alright, and then all regulated resource areas, um. So. As, as we're usually doing existing distance plan, you notice, you know, if there's some, uh, wetlands and. That's usually flagged early on anyways. So the survey will pick that up. So. And then this item J structures listed on the national register of historic places. Again, I think this might need to go to the demolition plan. Because that's where someone would do the research for that. Again, a survey would necessarily do that.
Okay.
So I almost see the demolition plan as a, uh, as a working drawing, going through the process. The applicant would come in with what they want to have removed and. It almost might be a negotiation thing, whether particular walls down boundary, you know. Property lines with different owners may want to remain or not. So.
Right. I think, Matt, I think back to the mansion up here on the west side, um, and how that plan helped understand. Before we got to the proposed layout, like what was existing. Um, it was really clear to me, um. Yeah, I, I referenced back to that plan too. I, I think. I think you're right though, with the natural regis, national registry of historic places. So just in your experience as a professional, that doesn't happen until like. The client or developer sits down. With the demolition plan, thinking about what's being removed. Is that when it happens?
Truthfully, that doesn't usually happen until someone in, in town government points out or, um. Or in a butter or someone points out saying, that's an old house. Have you checked this? So. Um, I have never really on my own gone in and researched that. It's always. It's, it's come from public knowledge after the fact, after you, you've started the process.
It's usually relatively low on the list of tasks to do on the development side. Yep.
But it, it, it is, does become a big. Uh, talking point during, during the proceedings of, uh, of doing this. So. Um, that's why if we have a demolition plan, that might be something that gets revised as it goes along.
And you can also. And you can also say like on the demo plan, the building that we're looking at demo is on the. The registry or not, you know what I mean? It's kind of, that's where that's where the that's the plan you'd be reviewing that would really be pertinent. To that conversation.
Yep.
Yeah, I I kind of like that approach. Do we want them to answer like a yes or no question? Please provide whether this. Property. Has a historic or national registered historical place, yes or no? I don't know. It would force them to look.
Yeah. Some, I I know for like Wakefield, they they had done a survey of significant houses. You can actually look it up online and that they're at the library. Someone just went around and took pictures and made notes of houses, but it doesn't mean there's any particular. Registration or anything about them, except that at one point someone went around town and took pictures of what they thought were significant houses, so.
Okay.
It, you know, I don't know if you want people to. Point out that it's on that list. That doesn't mean anything. It doesn't mean, and even if a house is on a historic register. It it doesn't mean it it is gonna last forever and it won't be. Won't be demoed if there's. Issues with it too, so.
Right, point taken with the mansion.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I I don't know if we wanna. And I always look at it, how much more work do we wanna require people to do if it's potentially not gonna be? An issue, so I think wait until. It becomes an issue and the board directs them to actually go look at this, I think is a better way to do it, so. Excuse me. All right. Basically, plan number two, context plan. To be certified by a registered professional engine, civil engineer. This is again. We may want to change civil engineer or surveyor, but. I don't think it really matters. Surveyor can prepare this and engineer can stamp it. I don't know if it really matters at all.
I would say for that one, we could probably just literally strike the. Be certified by. Or like, you you could just get rid of, just like have them provide a context plan, but it doesn't have to be certified. Per se, right?
Yeah, well, all the plans are gonna be stamped, so. Yeah. So. All right, so we'll take off to be certified. By a professional engineer. We may want to put on here that all plans need to be professionally stamped. And the appropriate discipline or something like that, because. I I do see. A lot of plans that are stamped by professionals that. Really shouldn't be stamping them. For one thing. And others that aren't stamped by the correct person, so.
I think that would make a lot of sense to put it in the general. The 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 general section, you know, it you know, just to catch all that gives us. The ability to enforce that if we need to. All plans shall be stamped by the. Professional or appropriate licenser. Per discipline or something to that effect, because there'll be architects stamping stuff too.
Yep.
You don't want to say engineers and leave the architects out.
Plans shall be stamped and signed. By. By a professional.
By the by the appropriate registered professional.
Okay, that's good.
Did you want by discipline?
Well, if you have a stamp, you you kind of know what you're.
Okay.
Technically, you're. Able to stamp in. You know, a lot of civil engineers are, are there civil engineers, but they. They may be a structural engineer and they shouldn't be stamping certain plans, so. You kind of have to leave that up to. To the design professional and. If they stamp outside of their. You know, their discipline, then they subject their stamp for. Or their licenser for review, so. I would hope they wouldn't be doing that, so.
Getting back to the context plan, I I I see why you highlighted J. As it relates to cross section showing elevations of the lots to be developed. And those on adjacent properties. My assumption is that you're you're questioning whether or not we should be having them. Show cross sections of adjacent properties.
Yeah, well, first of all, how do you develop that cross section? Where do you get the information from is and is it any good? And what's the purpose of it? So. So that's why, you know, I was gonna remove that. I I've never seen a context plan that has a neighborhood profile on it.
So I'm in agreement.
So I was gonna remove that. And even some of this other stuff, public facilities or properties such as conservation or recreation. Land, footpaths, bicycle paths or streets. I mean, obviously, you'll see the streets. I guess in a context plan, you would see that there's a park across the street, so. We could potentially leave that one. The H location of recorded and proposed easements. Again, how would you? How would you know what's proposed? So. Some of this stuff we may want to take off.
Would you would you even have the easement on the context plan? You know, because your easements, you're gonna have on more of your your site plan.
Yeah, you wouldn't have this really, so. And even when you get to. You know, some stuff, when you go down to item B, outline of existing dwellings and principal buildings, you can have that on your lot. You could potentially show them on other lots, but where is this information coming from? Is it any good? So. I look at this as, yeah, they they require it, but it's gonna be. From aerial information scaled on, it it's. It 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 doesn't really lend. Much information that's useful, except that. Maybe you can see if there's other buildings in a neighborhood, so. A lot of this stuff, I don't know. If we want to keep on there. Again, also E, existing contours. You can grab some GIS information. But you're basically showing where this lot sits. And the surrounding area around it, so you shouldn't turn this into a larger existing conditions plan, so.
I personally, I personally would advocate for. C. Which is the lot with all adjacent butters. Again, I think that's a site plan. The existing contours, I would admit to be removed. The easements. The public facilities and the cross sections. I personally feel as if there is value in having, and I hear your point about is the information any good? But the outline of existing buildings, when I'm looking at like, for example, the Stark Ave. I'm looking at the context plan right now, and I I I do see that there's value in seeing, you know. You can see it's an it's a single family neighborhood. And and in the lots, you can kind of get a general sense of how big the lots are compared to the adjacent buildings. I personally see value in that, but obviously, if other members of the board feel strongly otherwise, I can I can see the argument away away from that.
Okay, so but you would you would remove C, though?
I personally would, just because I don't, I think that that's your site plan. Your site plan's gonna have all the butters.
Except this goes five hundred feet out, so at least. I like this because if if someone's speaking. I live at such and such, you can pull this plan up and see exactly where they are and if and how this really does affect them or not. So. I would keep that.
Did we, did we, do we get that typically? You know, the actual list of the five hundred foot of butters?
Well, we get it in the certified butters list. So we have that. So this basically takes the certified butters list and lists them where they actually sit. In relation to the property, so. I I think that's useful. You know, we can, we can keep the buildings on there, that's fine. We, I mean, it's just a shaded line. Zoning boundaries, that's useful. So like principal natural features as described in existing conditions and demolition plan. But shown more generally, so they're basically saying. Show everything on existing conditions plan, but in a general manner. I I don't under, I don't understand that, to tell you the truth. Because this is gonna be at a different scale than. Your existing conditions plan, it's gonna be, this potential will be a forty scale, it may even be bigger. So trying to fit that much information and make it. Usable and legible. Is gonna be a stretch. So. So I think this one we just need to talk a little bit more through. So.
The only, the only counter argument to the principal features is that, you know, if you see like a, if there's like a, call it a river. You know, I think that they're seeing the like a river on a context plan, I could see there being some value in that. You know, if you're just trying to look at like the the bird's eye view of the entirety of the. Of it, you. Trying to show like a mountain, I don't think there's really gonna be any real value in that, and I think it'd be difficult to do without contour lines. But like bodies of water, I think, are tho of those types of natural features, I could see there being some value on a context plan.
All right. One of the things that I know we run into is if you're starting to show bodies of water on a plan. And they're not accurate. You can get into, are you within, you know. Two hundred feet of riverfront and things like that, so. I can, I can see it both ways, you know, you could, you could show something and if if it's. Scaled incorrectly or just in a general manner, it could. It could lead to, oh, why don't you go map that now and suddenly you've having them survey. Items on someone else's property, which. Gets extremely difficult, so.
Point you can, I I take back what I just said.
Yeah, so. We just, I I always look, you gotta be careful with what you're asked for, because you potentially. Setting off someone doing a lot of extra work to prove that, yes. Yes, I did show that river, but it is more than. Three hundred feet away and it. The way it scaled, it looked like it was a lot closer, so. All right. Property rights and dimensional standards. Again, this, this one I changed to sign by a surveyor and an engineer because there are. You know. Site distances and things on here that. Potentially, an engineer would need to do. Not always, but. I I may put in here a professional answer there. And if needed, an engineer, if there's items on there, so. I mean, anyone has any feelings on that?
I think that makes sense.
Because as you read down through here, you know, you've got. Requirements for stopping distances and sightlines. That is something that basically a traffic engineer needs to be looking at, so there's other disciplines that would need to be. Looking at this.
Although I would question, is like a stopping distance really something that should be on a property rights and dimensional standards plan? Like, I don't know if that's the, you know what I mean, like, you're trying to establish the the geometry of the lots. And who owns said lots. I I'm not. I mean. You tell me if I'm I'm reading missing, missing the mark, but is that really appropriate spot to be putting graphic engineering information on the plans?
True, would that might go more on site construction. To show it there.
I would think so, or you know. Yeah, probably say construction.
All right, let's let's potentially move this. To say construction.
Hey, just a, just a quick time check. It's eight o'clock. This is really useful. Do we want to keep going?
You know what, let's, let's get through at least. Since we started this one, let's get through this one. And then subsequent meetings, we can, we can go through and do the rest. I know it, there's a lot of little details we need to go through, and if we try to rush through them or. We take them too slowly, it's gonna take forever, so.
It's definitely worthwhile, so if people are feeling they got the mojo, I don't want to. Slow us down.
No, I feel it's it's the only way we can really do it.
It's just blast through it or?
Yep.
All right, all right. Let's, yeah, let's just, let's go on a little bit longer. Try to get through this, so. The other items on here, I I don't really have any. Any issues with everything else seems pretty good. Proposed bounds. A meets and bounds description on the plan that usually. Never happens, so.
Hey, Matt, just from my own ignorance, what is a meet meets and bounds?
It's, you know, starting at. At a point in, it's it's the written. Bearings and distances. It's something that would show up in your deed. It wouldn't necessarily be on a plan that if you.
What your title is actually based on?
Yeah, and when you go to make a new deed, you would need to do a meets and bounds description. You wouldn't really want to put it on a plan because. You're looking at the plan itself, there's no reason to have it written. It only leads to confusion. If one of those is wrong. It's gonna question, just calling the question which is the correct one, so I would say remove that one.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah. And then. Let's see. One thing that we need to put in here, let me just see. Is the town has a, has their requirements for. Lot numbering. So. We'll just need to, we always have this, this comment is that. They shall conform to the town's standards. I know it, it gets a little tricky because you've got to start. You're trying to prepare this plan, you don't know how many lots you're gonna have, but they want what lot number, what. The lot numbering is gonna be from the town, so. I'll add that in there that they need to look into that anyways. All right, so site construction plan. One thing. And I didn't highlight this yet, but. This clearly identified at least two benchmarks. This really should be on the existing conditions plan, not necessarily on this plan. If it's on existing conditions plan, it should carry through, so I'm gonna say move this to existing conditions. Because the surveyor would be the one who established and did these anyways. Now they, we've got on here the location of existing and proposed buildings. I know this always throws people for a loop when they see proposed buildings on there. People think that's exactly what they're gonna get in the end, but. It's just a representation of what. It's just a representation of what. May go there. So. I'm just pointing this out, we should keep this on here, but. We should have no illusions that whatever the nice small home that. Is displayed on that is going to be what's constructed, so.
Do, Matt, do you think that there's really value in having existing buildings being shown on the site construction plan? By the time that you're actually getting to the site can. The site construction, you theoretically, you're past your demo phase, the existing building should be kind of cleared out.
Right, well, there are some buildings that will remain, so, yeah, you would want to keep that on there, so.
So you're thinking like exist, maybe existing to remain buildings?
Yeah, so we have a lot where people are trying to keep the main house and, and add a road next to it, so. So yeah, I, we should definitely keep that.
Should we just make it existing to remain instead of existing?
We could do that, yeah. To remain, yeah.
I like that wording. I, maybe, maybe it's just my, the way my head was thinking, because we were just talking for demo plan, I was thinking. What do I care about the building that you already demoed? When I saw that.
Yeah, okay, I'll add, we'll put in to remain. And then propose, should we just leave proposed buildings or proposed buildings in a general manner or? Doesn't. So. This. This gets into the, the tricky situation where. When the planning board is approving this, we're only approving the general lot and the roadway. What the building on there, what it's going to look like, how big it's going to be, we have no say in that at all. But if this was. Adjacent to wetlands or there was other zoning relief and it was going through the ZBA. Those buildings would need to be on there.
And what about like a representative proposed building? Or you know, something to that effect where it's. Saying, you know, you're clearly saying that it's not the proposed building, but it's representative, so it's, you know, it's. It's kind of known that there's a little bit of a, it's not final.
Well, we could, we could do that, but again, if this same plan was going to go through CONCON or ZBA, they would want to have the actual building and they would want to lock that in. So. Yeah, I can see value for leaving it or. Or adding. You know, if we say a represent, a representative, representative building of what may be constructed. That could conflict with if we have a plan, it's going to be filed. And simultaneously, you know, the boards, so.
Maybe there's some like, maybe we add some language as it relates to. Representative proposed buildings unless we're, unless actual building is required by other boards such as, but not. Such as Con- Conservation Commission. You know, something to that effect, say, you know, basically noting that. For the plant purposes of the planning board, it can be a representative building, but if you're going to go to other boards, there may be other, you know. Kind of have the caveat of you may be required to have the real proposed building if you're going to other. Other boards, but we're not, we're not necessarily the, the requiring agency.
Okay. And. The location of existing. Buildings to remain. And. A proposed. You know. Representative building.
Unless required by other, other board having jurisdiction.
Yeah. And. Yeah, we'll have to work on that, one of the things that. I've seen before that I want to make sure that we do is that, that the plan that goes through each, each other. Board or commission is the exact same plan, because a lot of times we'll see, we'll see a plan. And it's presented to us and then the conservation's looking at a separate plan and they're dealing with things and. It's not consistent when it comes out, and that just leads to confusion with the builders saying, well. They usually take the, the lesser of. Of any of them and say, well, that's, that's how I gathered this, so I do want to make sure that. These plans are consistent throughout all the boards if we're doing. Simultaneous approval, so.
Matt, I think what I would advocate for is. Somewhere in here, and frankly, I haven't read some of the, the second half of this as deeply as the beginning, but. I, I think I'd advocate for a, a whole section on concurrent review. And, and maybe have that be as one of the components of it, because I think to your earlier point regarding Stark Ave. I think that the fact that they weren't going through a concurrent review and there wasn't any process associated with that. I think that's something that we should really think about hard with, you know, the CONCON and other relevant boards. And actually explicitly have a section that deals with concurrent reviews.
Yeah, I, I, I agree, and that's why some of the stuff at the end of this needs to move to the front. And we need to outline a lot of the, the major procedures that need to be done. And getting placed, and then we go through, okay, now you know what needs to be done, here's what the plan set's going to look like. So. I agree, we need to do that, so. I'll work on this note unless required by other boards. Alright. See. On resource areas, yeah, so a lot of this stuff, the. You know, the wetlands resource areas, they get carried over on all these plans, if they're on existing additions. They should automatically keep moving forward, so. On each of these plans. Dimensions of driveways, so a lot of this stuff. I, I don't see any issues with this. Again. Engineering may have some more.
And this is where, this is where the boundary of work needs to come in, in my opinion.
Yep. Alright, so. The remainder of the. Plans, the. Utility plan and profile, the grading plan. And the tree planting. Plan. And then erosion sediment control, a lot of that is, is dealing with the. You know, with more with engineering and DPW. If you want to move ahead to number seven. Again, this, the tree planting. Plan. We haven't really seen one of these, you know, unless it's a landscape architect who's doing this. But typically, these aren't done for most subdivisions, so I don't know.
I was going to ask about that because we went through a whole series of. Discussions on tree, trees with Stark. And the question my have is that, is this a, something that's appropriate as like a separate plan, or is this? Information that goes on one of the existing plans that we're having them submit?
Well, again, if, if we're doing this, a conventional subdivision, we're dealing with the, the shape of the lot. Drainage on the lot and in the roadway, we really can't dictate. Where they plant trees and things like that, so I don't know if this is even appropriate to be here because. We're, it's kind of out of our purview of dictating, oh, you're going to plant these trees or keep certain trees. I, again, I've, over the years I've been on the board, I've kind of made it. One of my. Policies is that there is a buffer between. A butter's lands that you leave some of those trees, so they take the brunt of any, any windstorms, so. I don't think we can get much further than that and to say you need to leave some of that have a limited work line and, and what's behind that limited work line remains. I don't think we can get into, well, you need to replant that. We do get into it occasionally when. The builder, the developer has an agreement with an a butter. And then we make sure that we put those on the plan, so at least it's. It's documented and monumented that this is going to happen, so. I don't know how to handle this, to tell you the truth, if we need to keep it or move it or what? So.
So Matt, I, so I understand. Technically, we can't force any of these applicants to plant certain tree, trees, so I'm just looking at what the CONCON sent us today to about. You know, street trees, species per tree warden, add in consultation with the conservation agent. In the past, have we, you're trying to enforce that more, but really it's not in our purview is what you're kind of saying.
No, what, what I'm saying is this tree planting plan. We could, we can only use this if it's within the public right of way. We really can't go on to someone's. Lots and say you need to plant certain trees there. The ZBA can and the conservation can if they're within the. Their, their jurisdictional step, setback, so. Having this in our regulations that need to have this. It's one of those things, we're, we're telling you need to have this plan, but then again, it's kind of out of our jurisdiction to actually enforce it.
And how many landscape architects are on a subdivision development team?
Well, again, we've had. We've had some because they've been tied in with conservation or something.
Yeah, so let me rephrase, it, it's not necessarily a certainty, you'll have a landscape architect for some of these.
No. The developer's not going to hire a landscape architect if they don't have to. So.
I would say it's been about fifty fifty in my experience on this board.
So do we strike this entire thing, or how do we, how do we handle this?
It strikes me that this is. Slightly the same logic of, you know, representative proposed buildings, because. Right, we're, we, we basically want a tree planting plan as required and meet standards of. Other boards given their concurrent review, something like that, so if you're. Because the trees are important, right? I mean. Stark Avenue, they were. Removing a lot more than, you know, they were. Potential, so.
I guess the other one thing that I would say that is that those are about existing trees. That were not being, yeah, those are about existing trees and whether or not they were. Behind the ex- existing limit of work and if they're going to be removed, not about. Adding new trees, the only new trees that were really being added as part of Stark Ave were, were within the public right of way.
Right, right, that's a good point, thank you.
So I almost think it would be one of those things where it's like, if, if, if required by other boards. Submit the tree planting plan to us, but other, if it's not, if it's not a requirement. So like if this isn't, doesn't, isn't required by the ZBA or the CONCON. You know, I would say that we should say it's, it's not required, but if they need to submit it to those boards, I think we'd want to get that as part of the overall context.
Alright, so, so if required. By other boards.
Yep.
A tree planting plan. To be certified by a registered professional landscape architect. Shall be provided. Shall be provided in the planning board submission. Or just in provided?
I, I think provided in the planning board submission, I think you want to make sure that they're. Submitting it as part of this overall package, if they're, if they're, they have to go get it for a different.
Okay.
Because the, the, it's, it's going to be used, you know, in the case of a con, where the CONCON is requiring a tree plant, planting plan. That's going to be useful context for us as we. Review this holistically, but if it's something that it's, it's not applicable, then I, I don't think we should necessarily get into the. Get into information, we, we have, we have enough information on these plans, we don't need information, we can't do anything with it.
Yeah. Alright. And then. So basically, the rest of the plans, the remaining plans is the. Erosion and sediment control plan. Again, I don't see anything here, engineering will probably have more that they want to add to this. So I think we just need, have a note for engineering to review or DPW engineering. Same with the. Details. So. Any of the detail sheets. So. Alright, I think, I think we've covered quite a bit on this tonight, it, there's a lot here. I would like to pull up the. The list that I'm going to end this right now. The list that was sent over to us today. Steve, you have that, that you can pull up or? Again, it's harder for me to pull it up on my computer, so.
This is the, the CONCON's comments?
Yes. I think we should go through and, and kind of address what we can use in our. Regulations and, and stuff that's basically out of our jurisdiction.
Yeah, alright, yeah. Let me do a little problem here.
You see that, I think I was able to just pull it up.
Oh, you were, okay.
Yeah. So like the, the first thing, lot improvements. This is something that, again, it's out of our jurisdiction for this. This would be something that the ZBA or the CONCON. Would, you know. They would highlight the thing about sidewalks, whether eliminating a sidewalk. That would be up to us if it's a public sidewalk, so. I think we would just have to. You know, take. You know, input from that board and see if we are willing to. Eliminate or reduce the sidewalk.
Matt, not to cut this short, short, but I really appreciate these notes from the Conservation Commission. And I'm wondering if this ties into that whole. Big note that review is concurrent between boards and it's. And thi- this is exactly why it's so important.
Yep.
Like, I almost want to have something in there that we don't review until. The agenda or something from the boards that we select and including obviously the Conservation Commission. Their project is on the agenda, their agenda, I don't know how we can. Force that, but I don't know, I've, I've never been in the situation where. I'm thinking again of Stark Ave, how disjointed it was compared to on Prospect Street where it was just like. The difference in how smooth that project went because it was concurrent.
Well, I know for a lot of subdivisions. There are some decisions that. The planning board needs to have input on before. They even, you know, want to get a plan to go to conservation because they get a lot more detailed there. So some of the bigger things. The placement of the road. They want to work that out on the front end pretty quickly.
Do you see any consistency in timing? For. Or is it just something that we should take case by case and, for example, during that first review in front of us that we should? Make a comment that's in our notes that says the planning board recommends. This developer slash owner.
Get on the agenda for these specific boards or commit our.
Well. Most of the other ones were we're we've done with the Concom or ZBA. If they filed within two or three meetings of. It coming up before the planning board. Um, and even that gets kind of tight because you're talking. Two or three meetings, that's, you know, potentially six, eight weeks that have gone by already. Um, and then we have a, you know, we have a hundred and thirty five days from when we accept it to act on it, so. I I'd hate to say. You need to have it filed. With each board because there's a whole different. Advertising that needs to be done for each board, so.
Right, is it enough? And maybe this is more for Aaron. Um, is it enough that we? Deliver copies for comments? Or deliver a PDF for comment before our meeting? Is that enough due diligence on our board's part? To these individual boards and committees that. To 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 look for comments back? Is that enough for what we do in that? Like, for example, would that replace us looking for? A specific approval by a board?
For me, I've only really had to do Stark Ave from.
Right.
Start to finish, so I can only speak to that. I found that input that. Which again seems like also kind of a unique situation because I took so long to file with Concom and it seems like other projects they would file a little earlier in the process. I felt like each department was pretty good about getting back to me about any concerns that they had from the get go when I submitted the plans both through PDF. And gave hard copies as well. But again, I can only speak to the one. To that one project. Um, I don't know in the past how that kind of worked with Paul. Um, if you found like you got input from other departments or. Other um, other boards, I'm I'm not sure. Um, or if we need to have more of a. More language within uh the bylaw stating stating that. I guess I I'll kind of throw it back to people that have been on the board for a little bit, what what they've seen in the past too.
Right, I don't recollect a lot of comments coming back in from other boards for subdivisions, but to Matt's point earlier. We don't get a lot of subdivisions, so it might not be as. Important and maybe we just take it case by case.
Well, I I I think like in. The matter of stark out, they knew. Conservation knew that it was gonna be filed at some point because it was clearly. And, you know, they had jurisdiction over it. I don't think they wanted to. Comment on our plans if they they were gonna see the full plan set. And and start reviewing it. So in that case. I think conservation had some information that. They kind of wanted to share with the applicant, but they chose not to file with them, so then. They're not gonna go digging through their files and pull out. And comment on stuff unless they're gonna do it when they know it's in their meeting and they can kind of control how it it comes out. So. Again, that that was just this. This developer team decided to do it that way. Which I think was just a bad, bad choice on their part, so. So again, as long as we put something in there that. And I don't know if we can put a timeframe on it, but. Uh, we should put something that if after the statutory period, if you haven't, you know, if you. Need relief from another board and you haven't filed with them. Um, your application. Would be rejected. I don't know if we can do that, but. Uh, you know, I would have preferred to go the hundred and thirty five days with Stark Av and said, well, you haven't filed with conservation, so. You know, you need to refile once, once you do that. We may want to look at doing something like that, so either you. You file concurrently or risk at the end of the statutory period having your application. You know. Your subdivision not favorably approved because you did not do that. I don't know if that makes sense.
I I think that makes sense, and if allowed statutorily, I think that would make a lot of sense. I think we need to run that by. Town council, but I think it makes a lot of sense where if if you are applying for a subdivision and you're. Basically not moving forward with concurrent review of other ports, but they they clearly have jurisdiction. I think it makes sense to kind of have a, for lack of a better term, a shit or get off the pot. Stat or, you know, language or they could, it would be not favorably approved and put them, but not disapproved such that it would lock them out from being able to resubmit.
Well, truly, I don't think any other applicant who's gonna. Go the way that that stark that went if if they know what's good for them, so I mean.
I mean, that's the other thing is are we just overreacting to one bad experience?
We we may be doing that, so. But I think we put in there, the expectation is that. You know, any plans filed with the planning board that need relief from other boards will be filed concurrently and maybe leave it at that. So.
Yeah, sorry to drag that one out. I just feel it's it's so critical for us to get that part right.
It is because almost every subdivision that we do from now on is gonna have. Either a wetlands component or. You know, something that needs some relief from maybe ZBA, so we just need to make sure we have that set up, so. It goes a lot smoother.
From from a from other boards that typically have jurisdiction. Concom is an obvious one. ZBA makes a lot of sense. Are there any other ones that you're you're typically? Used to another subdivision seeing that there's a, you know, that applicant has to go get relief from?
Those are the only controlling, controlling boards.
Right, aside from departments and thinking of engineering and their input, obviously that's critical, so.
And the only other one would be if it was a state agency, if you were on a highway that, you know, a state. Road and you needed to have approval from them, but again.
Yeah, it's gonna be much longer.
Yeah, they're gonna run at their own pace, so.
Yeah, we, no matter how much we try to prod the state, they're gonna say, we're gonna move at our pace. Thank you very much.
Yeah. So I know one thing on this on for street trees. I see street trees, species per tree warden. The. I think Bill's the only one who's been on here long enough to know that. We kind of. Change that where we have a list of approved street trees that they need to come up, work off of because. Frankly, some of the trees that were being approved. Just weren't. Appropriate. So that's why. Um, we have a improved list that you need to work off of and not rely on. Someone in town telling you what is a nice tree to plant there, so. And if you want, we can show you some subdivisions where inappropriate trees were basically used. So. But anyone else have any? CNN, anything else on this list? That you think we could work into or?
Yeah, I haven't looked at it yet. Jim, do you, can you scroll?
I did a quick review when we did receive it earlier today and the trees jumped out at me. Um, the erosion sediment control plan. But this is so. On comp specific, the comments are great. But I think what we receive on our plans is perfect for our board. I'm not sure we have to add anything else.
The only thing that really stuck out to me is the big red bolts thing saying Concom doesn't receive requests for comments from planning board. Which. I feel like is probably something that we should do, question mark?
Um, I I I don't want to say that's not. I I do know that it was sent um for Stark Ave, um, because they were on my list. But I'll be more adamant and making sure um that. They get that next time.
And and I think again, in Stark Ave. The applicant really had the obligation to to go to Concom early on anyways, but they. They chose not to. So.
Concom's not a, an expert that we can invite. To attend a meeting, right, to attend a subdivision re- review.
Well, for again. If there are a lot of specific. Things that they they need, it's gonna be in their jurisdiction, not ours. So anything in the right of way, if they want to comment on the type of street trees that. That's fine. But. Erosion incentive control, that is basically dictated by the DPW anyways. So they just need to show it on the plans that are gonna be submitted.
Okay, thank you.
And this, this might go back to as well, this whole idea of having a meeting between the three chairs. Um, maybe quarterly and also uh involving internal departments that work with those boards. Um, whether that be, you know, myself, Rebecca, Elaine from Concom Engineering. To have those conversations, but.
All right, well, I don't have any other comments right now on the definitive plan. I think I can do some edits on this and. At a future meeting, we can. Go through it again and then maybe pass it on to engineering and see what kind of comments they have. I do think maybe at our next meeting, when we get to the back section, we may want to see about rearranging. Moving some of the stuff that. Is required. And it's at the back of the. The regulations and put them up front. Specifically the. Simultaneous filings, so.
Do you want to? I mean, we haven't looked at the schedule to know uh sort of when we're coming back. Is it? Worthwhile to say. Revisit this um at the. January or July twenty sixth meeting, give give you some time or you want.
Well, we can, we can just keep it on the an agenda item, and if we have something to move forward on, we can do it. Um, I think it's safer to just keep it on and if we're not prepared to go, it's. It's not like we're shooting for a deadline, but we have it ready to go. It's better that. We have it posted that we may talk about it than. If we don't have it posted and we start talking about that can lead to some, some issues, so.
That uh, that was a a great discussion and I really appreciate all of all of y'alls. Professional expertise, because and it really shows, so um, that was fantastic. The item four are items not anticipated by the chair. I made a a list of of some things, but um certainly I would like to start with each of you. Any, any going to care to start?
Uh, I I have one thing. I know I've had a couple of conversations with members of the board as well as Aaron separately, but I think that. Given the uh, the the state's mandate as it relates to the uh MBTA. Uh overlay districts, I think it we probably need to start thinking as a board of how we want to. Start working or facilitating um those discussions as it relates to that item. Uh, on a go forward basis, especially considering that I think, given the the nature of the of the. Requirement from the state as well as the the um. Controversy around housing and general production development at large in general, I think it's probably gonna be an extended period of time. I I think. I'd advocate for us to put that on as an agenda item um for a future date to start. Having those discussions as it relates to how we're gonna build that process out of soliciting both public input and as well as interfacing with. Relevant stakeholders uh within the town. Uh, you know, engineering and and other folks that Aaron I know is being a a great conduit to. Um, I I fear is if if we don't start that process, then we won't. Be ready, for lack of a better, or we try to do something on a compressed time scale, which I don't think will facilitate success.
Uh, I I very much uh agree with you and think that's uh, that's really helpful. That's one of the major deliverables I think we want to have uh for this year.
So in terms of for tonight, I don't know if I necessarily have anything else besides any other comment besides, I think that. On a go forward basis, we should put this on as an agenda item to talk about, and then we can figure out how we as a board want to. Move the ball forward on this particular topic going forward, so we're not talking about something like this with way without. Public uh advanced notice as well as, you know, without one of the members of our board.
I think I would appreciate. Uh, do we think we uh? We can have some information to talk about this on the twenty eighth.
And you know, I I had a conversation with Jim. I I'll be completely transparent. Yes, I think the process needs to go in with these timelines. The number, uh, the dates haven't changed from what I've seen of what they originally rolled out. But there are conversations that are being had between many organizations and the state and they, those organizations haven't heard back from the state about. Their concerns of currently what the law states um and what that looks like. So I, you know, the conversation Jim and I had is, I know this is a contentious subject. Not only for Wakefield, but um communities in general right now. I just think there's so many unknowns too that I would hate to. Put things out there where we still don't know the answers ourselves, like do the units that we've already created within our mixed use, do those count? I've heard yes, and then I've also heard no, it had to be by right, so. Um, I think there's just still a lot of unknown, but it doesn't mean that we don't um shouldn't. You know, start an initial process. And what that looks like, I I'm still trying to think that through myself, um, and maybe I can report back um with a better idea the next meeting of. You know, internally what uh the thoughts are from the town administrator. Of the best way to move it forward. It just, there's so much, there's so much unknown right now. It it just makes it um. Hard, to be honest, hard to plan, and I've had a few conversations with other communities too and. You know, I think. Basically have done what they had to do, report to the town council and um sign off that they'll be in um compliance. But other than that, um, that I haven't really seen much move forward, but um. You know, maybe the next meeting uh after some conversations um with more internal uh department heads. Um, we can come up with some sort of plan.
I I would. Kind of. Push the position that again, we don't want to jump out and and be the lead on this if we. If we don't know. Which we're going on on this. We could, you know, we could jump out and and start taking initiative and. Things go on behind the scenes that we we don't know about and we end up looking kind of foolish because. We started doing something and information wasn't necessarily out there yet or just wasn't ready to be put out there yet, so. I would just caution that we don't want to jump out too fast unless we know exactly what. We're doing because once information gets out there, it's hard to. Take it back and it could almost be detrimental when you get further down the road when. Someone says, well, the planning board was working on this. Why suddenly are you doing something completely different? Something completely different?
So Matt, while while I hear you, and I I think that what you're saying makes a lot of sense. I also. I I personally, you know, just as a personal aside, I think that some of the things in this in this regulation makes sense that we should be doing it regardless of we're being forced by the state or not. As it relates to. You know, creating zones where there's, you know, the ability to create more housing as of right. You know, I think that there's some, I think there's a legitimate conversation that even if we weren't, if there wasn't this element in the state, I think that. There's an appropriate conversation that needs to be had at a certain point as it relates to reevaluating. You know, our zoning map writ large. You know, I think that all of us know that the zoning map is probably out of date and. Needs to be updated. You know, there's probably, we've talked about waiting for the master plan for for that process. So there's a bunch of different things that are moving along, but it's just a matter of trying to figure out how do we as a board want to. To to move start the process because if we don't start, obviously, nothing will ever happen. So, you know, I think that. Overall zoning map, we've talked about waiting till, you know, Q one of next year in order to start that process if we need to have some sort of housing overlay district. You know, trying to start start that process and have it be transparent enough that we can, you know, provide the information to the public and solicit it. You know, I think that there's a level of homework that we need to start as a board in order to about. Where where that could be and what. That would potentially look like in order to achieve conformance. As it relates to the uncertainty that Aaron's talking about in the implementation, I a hundred percent hear that. However, I think that we have a couple of things that we know. That are in the statute, or at least in the guidance that we could start trying to. Figure out what would be the the right fit from Wakefield perspective. We know the minimum. Size of the fifty acres. We know the minimum housing production size that has been is in this is in the guidance. Unless those things are subject to change, I think there's some some baseline of like citing that we can start the process on.
Yeah, we could do that. But. It's such a hot button subject that. You're going to get criticism. Right off the bat and. From my experience. We're going to get more blame than any credit with moving forward quicker than than not, just. From what I've seen in my time here. So that's my caution is. We never look like we're doing good if we're stepping on someone else's toes. And then we 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 get the blame for everything. So that's just my. My cautionary two cents on that. Just just be careful. That's all.
Does it make sense to? Maybe put this on the agenda for July twelfth, and that would give us. A little time to. Do a little like. Some more conversations with Aaron or other chairs just to. And this is not to make things public or. But. Sort of sort of understand the. The context that we are operating in just from a. I think Jim's right. Looking at the calendar and looking about how thing. You know, if things are, you know. Do then you've got to really back back into things. So that might. That might just inform what we do. Sounds like it's time for a little more. I don't for my information and research, just. Where where things are.
I think something too that we've talked about looking into, which might play a part into this whole process too, is. Reaching out to the Mass Housing Partnership, who's offering technical assistance to communities to guide through this process. So I haven't had that conversation yet, and what that looks like. I know they've started with a couple of communities. But something we might want to consider as well, you know, best practices or the best process to move forward. So I can. Try to follow up on that as well.
So maybe if this is an agenda item for for next time, it's really more of checking in on process and not on. Content and with the understanding. There being so many unknowns. We expect that to kind of be the outcome. You know, there's still a lot we don't know. Is that acceptable?
And also, too, I think there's people on this board, just something to think about. Is our current mixed use overlay district and what that looks like and how we the town planner previously. Came to kind of creating that district. And how maybe how do we build off that or look at that as kind of a starting point? So I believe that was passed back in two thousand fifteen. Mistake me if I'm wrong, but something, you know, a starting point for us.
I think this is why I'd advocate for us to put this on an agenda. As an agenda item. In the future dates, I think there's a number of elements that we need to decide. For example, to Aaron's point, taking an existing district and using that as the basis of this overlay district or. Creating something called COF or changing the underlying zoning for one of our existing districts. I think there's some process that we don't need to say, need to make any of these decisions right now, but we need to at least start talking about. You know, the decision points on how we want to proceed. And so I think that it makes sense to get on an jet on as an agenda. Maybe it's the July twelfth date in order to allow some more time for, you know, some of these other conversations to play out, but I think we need to. We need to at least talk about talking about the topic.
I thank you, Jim. I appreciate that. So I think that's that's the way we should we should go forward. Bill or Matt, do you have any items? For discussion?
Yeah, I do have one to report back from. I sent an email message to. Town Administrator and Sherry to find out more about what's happening with future meetings in person and all that. And I did read, I did hear back and just to paraphrase and shorten it. So. The second floor conference room is the only room equipped and is being used currently for in-house Zoom meetings. So the the goal is from the town is to always have Zoom or some type of hybrid option moving forward. There's also a. Extension, which is. Being proposed to extend the remote participation in open public meetings through December fifteenth, twenty twenty three. So that's the information I received back. From the town.
Yeah, and I still haven't heard anything if that's been signed yet.
So I think so. Right, but I still feel like tonight we had. Only the board here. Aaron and Susan, we. No other participation. If we were in person, would we have received with a few people come in? I'm not sure. But I feel like there is that opportunity, and there are people that maybe want to attend, but they don't have an internet connection or Zoom, so. I'd like to see us in hybrid mode somehow in the future, soon future.
All right. I appreciate you following up and. Being uncomfortable at the window.
One other item, the. Safe Streets booth at the festival by the lake. If you were there, we had a lot of turnout. I know the meeting was canceled from. Two weeks ago due to we didn't receive. Information on the agenda or the report from the MAPC before the meeting, and that's why Julie Smith Galvin actually canceled the meeting. Just to let everybody know who was signed up for that.
Thank you very much.
To build off that, sorry, we do have a tentative date for right now. July fourteenth, I think, the rescheduled meeting for that, because we do have, we're on a contract with them, so we have to wrap it up soon. But that should be going out to the public hopefully sooner than later.
Thanks, Aaron.
And that that's different from the July seventeenth event?
Yes, July seventeenth is Safe Street Sunday from twelve to four. Three quarters of the streets around the lake will be open for. Safe passage for rolling, strolling, walking. And if we get a good turnout, hopefully we'll be able to schedule more.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Well said, roll up, stroll and walking. That's great. Yeah, and next next week, we're gonna or the next meeting, we are going to talk about. The street name changes, rules and regs, and hopefully get that. I don't know. Maybe ninety ninety five, two hundred percent done. Matt, anything else from your side?
No, just for me, we may want to look at our summer schedule, what meetings. So I do know that. The July twelfth, I will be away, so I won't be able to attend that meeting. I don't know. If others have vacations, they fit in, but you may want to look at setting our schedule up for July and August.
Yeah, okay. Jim or Bill?
I'm fine. I plan my vacations around our planning board meeting.
I I I'm not going to be able to make the next meeting, not because of vacation, but because I'm going to be on a work trip. If on a plane going from Charlotte to Atlanta, so.
So you're going to miss the twenty eighth. All right, well. Yeah, let's let's come back to this on the. Next meeting when when Megan's here. Does anybody see any? Any reason not to cancel one of the August meeting dates?
I think historically, we've canceled the last one, which would be the twenty third, but. It's fine for me either way. I think. That was a good comment to see to have if we get Megan's input as well. I think. Historically. We've we've canceled one of the meetings, whether it was in July or August due to participation, but. For a while there, there were only three members of the board, so he really had to if somebody was going to miss it.
Yeah, okay.
Susan has her hand up, Theo.
Yes, Susan, oh, sure.
I'll be on vacation July twenty, August twenty third.
All right. Well, you can't have a meeting without you. That's just, that's just.
To put that out there.
Leave it there. Good. All right. All right, well, that that was one of my, the items I wanted to bring up. So we'll. The. I think we've. From my perspective, we've talked a lot about the, I think, all the major deliverables we want to achieve this term, the subdivision rules, the street name change. Master plan. And I think that's something. Also maybe deserves just a placeholder agenda item so that that we're able to. Speak to it when when it's appropriate. The the next master plan public forum is the June twenty ninth. Talking about how housing and cultural. Resources. So I think we can register now on the website.
You can, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you belong to any other nonprofits, organizations in the community, any help. Promoting it would be really helpful, trying to. Get a larger audience. And so. But yes, it is live on our website.
Fantastic. The and the the ultimate goal is two more forums after that. That's going to run, I think, through October, if not a little bit longer and with the draft plan being deliverable delivered sometime first quarter twenty twenty three. The. And so I think. We did get. Four copies of zoning board of appeals decisions on a couple of different. Permits or variances, including one special permit. I don't think we need to comment on any of those. We did receive a request for comment. On a variance related to reducing the the front setback. At Greenwood Street, AKA Cherry Lane. Is that something folks have any? Additional comments about? The the permit shows that Conservation Commission has approved it. All right, I don't. I don't think. We have any comments or certainly anything in the negative, so. Let that go. The. So. My second to last thing is I get. Yeah, we've got, I think we've done a good job of setting our agenda for next next time and. Lastly, I just wanted to make a formal thank you to Matt and Bill. For being steadfast leaders, Chair, Vice Chair, and alternating. Certainly, it's you both have been, I think, really valuable resources and role models for for us as new members of the planning board and. I'm grateful. So I wish more people are on, so we could give you some some applause and. Don't don't ever leave. The no, but but in all seriousness, I think this meeting really showed it. The the expertise and the attention to detail and the commitment to Wakefield. So. I really appreciate you both, and it's a. A good model for for us and and other boards.
Thanks, Theo, and when I'm running for reelection, I'll have you stand on a corner for me.
Oh, dude, I'm 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 good for it, so. The yes, please, and thank you. So there being no other items to discuss. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, Jim Hogan, all right. All in favor? Bill?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
And myself, yes, and. Again, thank you all for all the all the detail and the time and. Also, thank you to Susan and Aaron for providing all your technical assistance and your efforts. It shows. So thank you all very much and. See you in two weeks.
Thanks.
Bye, everybody. Way to go, Susan. All right, all right, great. See it. See you next week or next time.